The pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm now going to read our Lemonster School Committee statement. "The committee represents the needs of all Lemonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemonster." Having said that, we'll move on to our open forum. We have two parties who have requested ahead of time to speak. After that, hold on, Ron. After that, I will then entertain folks from the listening public who have not previously registered. Ron, did you have something? Oh, the video? So yes, if anybody plans on videotaping or audiotaping this meeting, you need to please announce yourself now and let us know your intentions. It's fine, but we just need to know ahead of time. Okay, having no one come forward, we're going to assume the only person videotaping us is LA TV. All right, we are going to call the first person is Caitlin Volope. If you could please unmute yourself, state your address for the record.
Hi, this is Caitlin Volope, 20 Shady Lane, Lemonster. I want to thank the teachers for doing a great job. Hybrid and remote has been no easy task, and you're all rocking it. Hybrid has been amazing for my kids. They are flourishing, and they have been much happier. They look forward to going in each week for their two days. We are now going fully remote starting the 23rd, and I understand why with the positivity rates. But I am truly hoping that we can get them back to their back for the date of December 7th, as stated. I hope that we can rely on Superintendent Deacon to make the call instead of having the school committee vote again for this. And additionally, I feel as though all families involved need to be vigilant and follow social distancing guidelines. We need to get these numbers down and get these kids back to school again. Hybrid has been a very positive experience for many kids. And my kids did not take it well when they were told that they are going remote again. They truly love seeing their teachers and their classmates, and to make it permanent would be a huge disadvantage. To end my piece, I again wanted to mention asynchronous days. They are not working for my kids. They have a lot of work, and some days they feel overwhelmed. When they go back to hybrid, can we please try streaming the classes? Maybe give it a trial period. I think you will be pleasantly surprised. Have a great night, and thanks so much to everyone, and keep up the good work.
Great, thank you. The next person is Robert Volope.
Volope, 20 Shady Lane. Wife kind of stole my thunder. Just want to kind of reiterate that I think it's important that we stick to the plan and let Superintendent call the shots when we are ready to reenter the buildings on the 7th. And that's about it. Everybody have Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Would anybody else in the public would like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, please. Would anybody in the community like to address the committee? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Greg Thomas, 310 Leggett Hill Road. So during this trying time, it's critical for our leaders to make decisions that are consistent, back-based, and above all else, in the best interest of the individuals they represent. I implore the school committee to keep these criteria in mind, and as they make decisions tonight and going forward. The state's metric changed from week to week, but the guidance remains unchanged. Students should remain in the classroom unless there's indication that COVID is spreading at the school. This is not happening, as indicated in previous emails and communications. The expectation has been that decisions to switch between hybrid and remote would be transparent, fair, consistent, measured, and with thresholds that would be voted on by the school committee. This again was not done. While a two-week break might seem fair in theory, many parents are scrambling for childcare options. With a child who has autism, this is incredibly difficult for us, and change is extremely difficult for her to adjust to anything. I realize that everyone's jobs here aren't easy. The metrics task force has received a dashboard along with thresholds that I provided, along with recommendations that are consistent with the state and CDC guidelines. As elected officials, it's your duty to ignore personal opinions, union loyalty, and party affiliation to do what's in the best interest of children of this community, which is safely to bring them back to the classroom on 12/7. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? One last and final time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please do so now. I am muting yourself and stating your name and address for the record. Having no one come forward, we're going to close the open forum portion of our meeting. Superintendent, is there any communications today? There are not this evening. Okay, Superintendent, we'll move right on to your report then. Thank you. So there's actually, in this horrific time, much to celebrate in our school department. We, as of last week, opened up pre-K through grade nine. And it was so nice to hear from freshman parents. We usually hear from the younger parents, but even the freshman parents said that was just such a light for my children to go, even if they went one day to have that human connection. They really enjoyed the time. We are able to be open this week as well. As you know, we had planned next week because of Thanksgiving. Monday and Tuesday are full days, but they are full remote days, so all students will have their teachers all day long. We also want to celebrate our fall sports, our clubs. We have art clubs going. We have inter-class plays virtually. That was amazing. The talent of our students and the staff to pull this off, I can't say thank you enough for sharing your talent and your effort, and most importantly, your time. So we have band going. We have arts going. We have chorus happening. You name it, there's something out there for everyone, but it just looks a little different. And on top of that, we have students coming into the building. If you drive by a school in the morning, you will see smiles from ear to ear. Students have enjoyed it. Staff has enjoyed it. And we are actually hoping to have more students come back in as soon as possible. We want our class sizes to, our grade levels to get a little bit higher. We're almost in a 50-50 split, our district having remote students and in-person. So we want you back. We're doing everything we can to keep you safe, and we are definitely calling attention to it. So as we are approaching Thanksgiving, that's the click for us, a little bit of a trigger. And our community is in the high-risk category, red. The school department has determined to take a brief, very brief pause through December 4th. All programs and services will pivot to a remote in hopes to return all our staff and students healthy who have either tested positive or have been in quarantine for up to 14 days. The return date of December 7th allows our community 10 days after Thanksgiving to address any, any, any symptom associated with COVID. We're determined to get all of our students back in person on December 7th. So it is imperative that we ask, and please, please, our community, to adhere to all guidance. Should something happen, you have a symptom, please get tested. Notify us as soon as possible, and we will work with your family and with your children. We want our students back in person. We know that that's where they belong. So December date is our time. So I just want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. Times like this, I know it's tough, but I am very grateful for the people of our community and who are working with the school department to have this happen for every child of Lemonster. So I wish all of you the same as well. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Right now, we're going to move on to presentations, and we have a request to bring up the teacher feature first. So without any objections, why don't we do that? Mrs. Sherri Bluen, are you ready, Sherri?
Good evening.
Sherri, can I just introduce you first? Because you are one of those rock stars out there that I am so happy to have worked with and worked for. Sherri has been teaching art for 40 years, 40 years. 10 years in Maine. She's worked at Priest Street, Francis Drake, but it was officially southeast, Fallbrook, Johnny Appleseed, and believes that she's found her home at San Jose. She has taught elementary art for 18 years before she moved up to the middle school. And she's married, this is fascinating, she's married to a contemporary impressionist painter. But her personal media is watercolor. And if you ever see her work, it's exquisite, and what she does with our students is beyond. So with that, Mrs. Bluen, it's all yours.
Thank you for your kind words. And I want to share my screen to start my video. So I'm just going to let you kind of talk me through that. I just need to find the present button here.
Sherri, this is Steve Mamon. I'm going to play your video for you.
That would be so nice. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Nice teamwork. Fall was an amazing display of color at San Jose this year, but also a voyage of new challenges for all of us. I realized I had a disconnection between the students and the supplies at San Jose that were necessary for them to do the projects that I had assigned. We put together art bags, drawing paper, markers or crayons, and a Sharpie. We made 150 bags, and they were all picked up or delivered for the Term 1 students. The remote classes started up. A student in Term 1 Art would have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 11:20 to 12 o'clock. And our Fun Fridays, the student would have a menu of choices from all specials. The unique feature of the remote schedule for the specials was that all of our six classes were scheduled to meet during the same block. Our answer to that was to pre-record all the class material and to schedule live classes on a rotating basis. Let's take a peek into my classes. My format for each class was an assignment where I would present a short slideshow that introduced the learning targets for the lesson, a connection to an artist or culture, where I would present one or more instructional videos, like the ones you're peeking at right now, and a rubric that showed how their project was to be evaluated. I found that by making my own videos, I could get right to the exact instructions that I wanted my students to have. Before students could turn in their work, they had to learn a few techniques of digital photography, lighting and shadows, filling the frame, and then how to turn in their picture. Beautiful artwork came flooding in, by email, by Google Classroom, and now some samples of beautiful student projects. Term 2 Hybrid Remote has just started for our students. It's wonderful to see all the students back in the building. We are getting the Term 2 Art Bags ready to give out. Students are picking them up. We are all settling into our new hybrid remote schedule. The days are changed a bit, but with a little longer block, we're finding that we can do more different types of learning activities in live classes. Art Club Live meets on Fridays from 3:00 to 4:00. We have social time in the afternoon. We have art-related games every week, and lots of drawing and sharing. I wanted to share our Veterans Day project. Students in art classes and Fun Fridays were asked to make a card. They sent in beautiful artwork, and we printed it out, and we cut it out, and made beautiful cards for the veterans to be handed out at the senior center. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for supporting the arts for the students of Lemonster. Thank you to my colleagues and to Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Oliver for your help and your patience. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you very much.
You're wonderful. Mr. Steinberg would actually like to say a few words?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to take a quick moment and say how much Mrs. Bluen means to the community at San Jose, our aesthetic, our sense of community. She's always the first one to step up, to do whatever is necessary for the kids. We had a wonderful, wonderful dinner last year at Thanksgiving for some of our families, and Sherri was very, very involved in a lot of preparation and planning. And of course, how amazing the cafeteria and the auditorium and everything looked. So she goes above and beyond every day, and we're really so proud to have Sherri as a member of the San Jose community. So Sherri, this is definitely a wonderful honor, and we're so happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
Great job, Sherri. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you very much. We particularly love seeing the children's artwork. That's great. Okay, moving on to our next presentation and discussion is the Advisory Winter Athletic Update. David Palazzi?
Good evening. How's everybody doing out there?
Good. How are you, David?
Good. Thanks for having me this evening. I just wanted to kind of give you guys a quick update as to how our fall season went, and then kind of get you up to date as to where we are in our progression towards the winter athletic season. So first off, our fall, I'd really like to thank literally all our nurses, Bonnie Keckler, Katrina Kuchar, and yours truly over there, Kathy Goddett, for really their hard work in just organizing any situation that they thought might come up or could come up, and just constant contact with me and all the coaches. And you know, it really, really went well to what we seemed to have in place. I wanted to thank the staff, the teachers, for letting our kids out a little bit early sometimes when they had some away games. Of course, the student athletes, all of the coaches, our workers, everybody just working extra hard really to get these kids on the field. And of course, to be down there at Doyle Field and see all the players running around and just with that Blue Devil pride. I was really excited to actually be working again in that capacity to watch games. And I thought, you know, we did a nice job. Our coaches, our players, really doing the best we could to try to follow all the rules. I'm not going to say we followed them 100%, but I think, you know, the intent was always there to do the right thing for our community. We made it through the fall, believe it or not, without incident, and finishing our season. And all of our teams were able to play all of our games. Knock on wood, a couple of the other communities, they didn't make out as well, unfortunately. I mean, we would hope that everybody could make it through, but I was just happy to see our teams get through the whole fall season. With that said, you know, our vigilance with the protocols and the hand sanitizer and the lanyards around the parents, and one parent per student athlete and all of those things, we tried to follow to the letter of the law. I really think that helped a lot. I know sometimes it can be frustrating when you see open seats and things, and people want to get into games. But it truly is to keep the kids on the field. That's our number-one goal, as it is, to get the kids and keep them in school. I mean, you know, we all get it at this point. Really talking about the fall, the EEA, obviously, November 6th, they did release another packet of information in regards to moving indoors. And you know, that packet made it obviously to the MIAA COVID-19 Task Force, which Steve Dubzinski met today at 4:30 with the basketball committee. We had met as athletic directors from the MidWatch last Friday. So we're kind of compiling all of this information from the sports that we're going to be able to sponsor in the winter as a league, to the sports that, you know, maybe we may be able to have coming from the state and the MIAA. So there's a number of things going on, you know, right now. Just to keep people up to speed as to what we do offer in the fall. If we weren't in COVID, cheer, boys and girls basketball, boys and girls ice hockey, boys and girls indoor track, boys and girls swim with a co-op with Neshova, wrestling, middle school basketball, boys and girls, and Alpine Ski with a co-op with Lunenburg. So those are the normal activities that we do offer. I know the EEA has already put into place competitive cheer and wrestling into that category. I guess the best example would be like football in the fall, where they were able to have practices with cohorts. But again, we're inside now, so that might change some things. So we're still waiting to hear, you know, from the MIAA. And then, you know, we're all going to get together with our MidWatch athletic directors and kind of, we're going to release a letter collectively on Friday from all of the MidWatch, Midland Watch, Houston League teams, from all divisions as to, you know, the protocols we're going to fall follow, and the sports that we will, or they tell us we can have in the winter. So it's kind of a group effort, and we want to have the same message, and we want to put in our own, you know, protocols on top of the protocols that the MIA had put in. I think an example of some of those this year in the fall, we only allowed the kids to practice for an hour and a half a day. They could only have five contests per week with a combined practice and game. So some of those things, we're really going to take a look at. We have a number of committees in place, kind of acting as a second layer to the state MIAA COVID-19 committee and what they put forward to us as to protocols and things we're going to have to follow when we move inside. So, you know, as of tonight, I have some information, but I really, you know, want to keep it at a minimum. You know, I can tell you this, I think the committee, originally, we're going to start November 30th. It's not 100%, but I think they're looking to move that out to December 14th to start the practices anyway. But again, that's not finalized, as we all know. You know, things have changed very rapidly, so, you know, there'll be more to come this week. And, you know, I can certainly present to everybody again when I have, you know, all of the information and, you know, keep everybody abreast as to what we'll be able to offer moving forward.
Thank you, David. Does anybody have any questions for David? I'll just go around. Sue? Melissa?
I guess a quick question, and I don't know if it's for Dave specifically, but if our high school come December is still predominantly remote, will that require a school committee vote on the athletic activities as it did in the fall?
So as my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, as long as we are going hybrid in general, we don't vote. If we are fully remote, that we do vote.
Okay.
Isabel, did you have anything?
No, I'm off it.
Okay, Brandon? Peter?
No.
Ron? You can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry about that. No, it was a good presentation to keep us informed. Thanks, Dave.
Michael?
Well, I wanted to follow up on the question about authorization and remote versus hybrid. So you started to say a start of practice of November 30th, but then it sounded like you changed it to December 14th. Do you have a sense of where, how that's going to end up? Because if we are remote and you need authorization from us, our next meeting is December 7th, correct? So I'm just wondering if you're sure it won't be till December 14th, so that if we have to authorize it, we have a chance to vote to authorize it? Or if we want, someone wants to pre-authorize something in case it's starting November 30th?
I could say this, a number of schools and athletic directors were really trying to get things together this week because a lot of their meetings will fall in the timeframe that you're mentioning. I'm not sure, when is our next meeting? Is it the 7th, did you say?
Yeah, the 7th.
So I do know, I mean, that's an excellent question, Mike. I think most of the athletic directors knew that this week, some were reporting back to their school committees like I am, just to kind of keep you guys abreast of what's going on. But to answer your question, we'll have a full awareness of where we're headed, at least to my knowledge, by this Friday. And that date of December 14th, we'll probably know more about that by Friday.
Okay.
So at this point then, we, maybe, Chris, we can put this back on the agenda for the meeting on the 7th, just in case we need to take any action. And it would be obviously good to have an update with what's going on.
Yes, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Dean, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Coach, good job by all, good team effort. And it's starting to creep into that Thanksgiving game season when you and I and many others in the community, since we're kids, went to these games and haven't missed one. And I hope that on the other end of this, maybe there's a spring game or something that can be scheduled for later on, so these students get a chance to play the 2020 in 2021, and get a chance to continue on with the rivalry. That's huge. And the other thing is, thank you for putting it together. We're beginning to see many of the universities and medical world's studies on mental health crisis that students have been facing by not being in school and not being able to participate in activities like art and culture and in sports and et cetera. So that's a, I know it's not easy to put these programs on, but there was a real taste and need and desire and passion for it. So thank you to you and all involved for making it happen. It was critical and extremely important that it did play out the way it did.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I'll just say, you know, kudos to everyone who's been involved, you know, from the players to the coaches to Dave, the support staff. Everybody worked really hard to make this a success. So thank you, and we look forward to some more information in the near future.
Thank you.
Okay, keep pushing us forward, Dave.
All right.
Thank you so much. Matrix, Kathy, I presume you're taking over?
Oh, yes. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Kathy.
Hi.
Yeah, so we do have the COVID-19 webpage. For anyone who has not seen it, you go to the district webpage, and on the top banner, you can choose COVID-19 and you can choose COVID-19 and see that. The city numbers have really been increasing. So Leominster City as a whole, we're currently up to 360 individuals that have COVID-19. Now, we have not seen spread in schools. We've worked really hard. As soon as, every morning, I check the Maven report, pull up anyone that is school-aged, look and ask and to see what school they might be at, put them on that spreadsheet and communicate that with the school nurse. So we can then communicate it with the parents, make sure that they have the information on isolation, and then look and see if they've been within the school system at all within their infectious period and decide to quarantine those individuals that meet the criteria for quarantine. It's labor intensive, we've been doing it. My nurses are the most amazing people in the world, and it is truly a team effort. Now, I am going to say that we report to DESI, the number of students and staff that are diagnosed with COVID. The numbers that are on the DESI report are not actually accurate per what's in the system. And I just want to explain that in that if the students are hybrid, they don't count them, even though we go and we make sure that they're not in athletics and whatnot. If they have not been within the district in seven days, they don't count them. So our students are A-week, B-week, might not be counted, even though they're active students. So if you look on the report, four from DESI, which is also on our COVID-19 page, it says six students and one staff. I want to tell you, in isolation, last week on Friday, it was 29 students in isolation and six staff. On top of which, it was 134 students in quarantine and 25 staff in quarantine. Now, that was on Friday. I did pull the numbers as of today, and it really should be a once a week thing for real numbers. But today, we have 31 students in isolation, five staff in isolation, 135 students in quarantine, and 45 staff in quarantine. And I just, for transparency, just so people are aware, that when we are discussing what's going on in the school system, we really need the students to be there, we really need the staff to be there. And it's been a lot of work, and we're trying hard and, you know, the biggest thing of maintaining quarantine and isolation so that we don't have that spread in school. So that's about it. Any questions?
I'll just go down the list, Sue?
No, I'm all set.
Melissa?
I'm all set. Thank you again for all your work, for you and nursing staff.
Isabel?
Hey, do you have one question? And first of all, I want to start with thanking you, Kathy, I know how much work you've been doing and all of your nursing staff. I can't thank you enough, and I know how much work goes into the contact tracing and the quarantining, the isolation, and all of that, and making sure the public and our community members are aware of the protocols and all the things that you do to educate them as well. My question is on our pause. And the only reason why I have this question, what is the quarantine time for students if they were to be exposed or potentially exposed to COVID-19? And then, how does that correlate to that 10-day pause, right? So let's say folks are having Thanksgiving with family and friends, does that correlate to the quarantine time that it would take in a school? Or is it less or is it more?
That is an awesome question, Isabel. So quarantine period is 14 days from contact. So if they were to be with somebody, say, on Thanksgiving, who ended up being COVID-positive and they get notified, hey, surprise, I was COVID-positive and you are now possibly infected, it'd be 14 days. So it may or may not affect their school time. It depends, are they a Monday-Tuesday group, are they a Thursday-Friday group, are they an A-week, are they a B-week? So it would be that Monday-Tuesday group that would probably be affected most if they were, you know, placed on quarantine. Isolation is 10 days from the onset of symptoms or from your positive test, because not everybody is symptomatic. So it's one or the other.
Okay, that answers my question. I really appreciate that because I know some folks are confused on the difference between isolation and quarantine, the timeframe between those as well. And so if, so just to clarify, if someone or a student or a staff member, I don't want to condone anyone getting together on Thanksgiving, we have seen our numbers increase, but let's say they do participate in Thanksgiving get-togethers in some capacity, and a student or staff member ends up becoming exposed to someone who had COVID-19 on that day. Quarantine would be 14 days, so the timeframe would be 10-ish days, 10, 13 days in that pause. So technically, if there wasn't a negative test result, they would have to quarantine and miss school for three or four days potentially, depending on that circumstance?
So you brought up another interesting thing. Even if you test negative, if you are a close contact, it's a full 14 days.
Okay.
So they might be going to school on Thursday, Friday, and not doing the Monday-Tuesday.
Sure. So let's say someone is not positive, but exposed to COVID, and they are in that A-B hybrid model, they would potentially miss a whole nother week of school.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Just to clarify that, Kathy, they would miss going to school in person, but they could attend remotely.
Correct.
Just to be clear.
As long as there's no symptoms and they are able and feeling well enough to participate, I assume? That's like the caveat there?
So most people on quarantine aren't sick.
Right.
They're well, so they can still participate in school, but they would be doing it from home. And like I said, a negative test, you still have to have your full 14 days from the last contact with that individual who was tested positive. Doesn't matter. And that's one of the questions I get all the time, but I tested negative, what do you mean, I can't come to school? You still can't come to school?
Okay.
Except for 14 days, you become symptomatic.
That's very helpful, because I know some people have confusion with that too. If they test negative, I don't have COVID, I should be able to go to school, but you need to maintain your quarantine until at least that 14-day mark. And then, can you touch on Pittsburgh a little bit? I know Leominster and Pittsburgh often do things synchronously. Snow days are usually the same, things like that nature are the same. And both of our communities are in red. So they are, I understand, are delaying their hybrid implementation until January 4th. Do you know why they are not going to do another look come the 7th, like we are? Or just curious if you have any idea of their Board of Health and their reasoning over there, anyone?
I do communicate with their Board of Health, but not in regards to that. And I have not spoken with the nurse leader in Pittsburgh for a little while, so I really have no insight in regards to that. I do know that, you know, demographically, they do have a, you know, we're very similar, but they do have a lot more in regards to poverty, in regards to demographic differences where it might make change. But I really do not know the rationale.
That's totally fine. I just wasn't sure if there was some sort of rationale there that we didn't hear of. I do believe it was done in a city order in Pittsburgh, so that's just what I was curious by. And then, not necessarily a question, maybe more so a question for Superintendent Deacon. What is your thought process on the 7th? Knowing that potentially if there's an exposure, a child will miss a week of school, potentially if they're in that A-week, B-week, I just feel like, and you, of course, are the professional, I don't want to downplay your decision-making in any way. Numbers are positive, they're really high, it's really scary. And I know this will hopefully ease some of that scared feeling amongst our community members to at least have that time after Thanksgiving. But there's still two weeks before that Christmas holiday season coming up in between that period. And based off of communication, this is not transmission in schools, as Kathy pointed out, it's more so community spread with the pandemic fatigue and lack of social distancing and I would say mask-wearing, close contact. Why the 7th and not the 4th? Right, because I feel like I want to make sure our children and the families have some sort of consistency and preparedness in these plans going forward. And I know our students, and they have been fantastic, and their families have been fantastic, but it's the going back and forth between one model to another. And I don't want to put any more burden on their mental health, anything like that, but I just feel like it's a lot of back and forth, back and forth. Go ahead.
Okay, great.
Take it away.
Okay, so we knew this year would probably be a pivot plan. From the get-go, the goal was to have students in our building. We've done that, we've done that successfully. A ton of work has gone into it, and thankfully, our nursing staff, they have stayed on top of this. My first call in the morning and my last call every night is Kathy Gardett. I mean, we're starting to talk at 6:00 AM. The second she has that information, we are running to those schools and catching it. We literally did not let children off of a bus last Thursday and sent them back home. We're right there, we've got it. We're just to the point now, and we conferred, it's between Kathy, she is our medical expert, Board of Health, and then we called DESI and their team walked us all the way through this. And they also advised that we, right now, our numbers are high, our quarantining is high, but they were with me in holding and getting us to December 7th. Now, if it were to go downhill fast, we can push this out. I'm not afraid to push it out. But right now, we've had success in school. Kathy's team has been, I wish I could get a couple more nurses, she's been trying like crazy to hire some, just to make sure that we are catching it the way we are, because it's not happening within the schools. And so we're all talking nonstop. If it ever gets to a level that we are so afraid, we would close those doors. What's happening in the schools right now is really positive. And the meetings last week, people said, Paula, can we have one week, sleep with our kids? We want to ramp them up, make sure they have their materials, they're ready to go. Kathy's team, we're asking them, and I said to her, can you give me four more days? I just need four more days. And so everybody's on high alert. And, you know, we have principals right now that are subbing, we have duty aides that are subbing, and they're not going to miss any school at any point in time. So if it's a matter of just having to switch to remote for a little bit and just making sure everybody's healthy, we can get everybody off of quarantine. I've got too many teachers on quarantine right now, and even having one student on a quarantine is too much. So, you know, I'm really looking to the city for help to make sure we do a really good job in two weeks. We want our kids in front of us. That's what's best for them. So if Kathy keeps taking her vitamins, we're going to be okay this week. And I really feel strongly about the 7th, but I wouldn't be surprised either way. Right now, we're trying to control what we can control and educating students, we know that's the one thing we can do and do well, and we've been doing it. And now, students are going to have their teachers every single day, so that sort of got me excited a little bit too. So we do remote really well. So if that's our fallback, I feel confident about it. But hang in.
You have a date you're planning on reassessing? Is this like a reassess situation or a hard start on the 7th?
No, nothing's hard, nothing can be. I'm going to listen to the community and the experts, like we have been. We will be in contact with DESI again, we will talk to the Board of Health and talk to our medical team and say, what do you think? Really, that cohort said, okay, let's just slow it down a little bit. Thanksgiving, you know, it is the gathering holiday, that's the one time, right? So we're just going to take a little break. Everyone's okay, but we just need everybody back healthy. So after two weeks, fingers crossed, because our students and staff, they're doing it, they're doing it, and they're doing a great job.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I appreciate you all answering my questions. I mean, I'm not a public health professional, I just, I appreciate Kathy, I appreciate you all so much. And from the outside looking in, I mean, of course, it looks really, really scary. The numbers are really high, and then just you listing off the numbers of staff and stuff in quarantine is quite high. And so I want to make sure everyone gets healthy and everyone is safe. And I'm sure we will maintain all of our safety, and safety is our first priority going forward. But I was just, I wanted to know about January 4th potentially, because other communities, it seems, are doing so in similar situations like Stonem and others, and our positivity rate in the community is very, very high.
Correct.
And it'd be naive to think people aren't getting together for Thanksgiving. I know there's pandemic fatigue, so I just wanted to clarify those points and check.
We're watching it, we're watching it. I'm very lucky to have Kathy who's working with the city.
I trust that, I trust you're all engaged.
I didn't have her so intricate within the community, knowing the numbers, where it's coming from. We still don't have real clusters for us.
Right.
It's all bits and pieces.
It seems like it's all individual type.
Yeah, so we struggled. We actually were talking about pausing before we brought in the middle in the high school, but we didn't have clusters. Pittsburgh does have clusters, ours are very random. And finally Kathy, I have to call the department, I need to talk to somebody. So we just got our teams together and said, okay, well, we're doing okay, but I think we could be doing better.
Sure. Last question, Kathy, because that brought up a question for me, and then I'm done, I promise. Isolation, I know that's 10 days in self-isolation, does that indicate a positive test or a positivity case in a household or something like that?
Okay, so when you talk about households, if one person is positive, that person, so let's just say it's a first grader, a first grader tests positive, they have 10 days minimum of isolation. So within those 10 days, symptoms should resolve, no fever for at least 24 hours without the use of medication. Now, a first grader, you can't isolate them in a room, they can't go to the bathroom by themselves, they can't stay alone and eat by themselves, somebody's got to be with them, you know? So one parent, both parents, maybe the siblings, depending on the household situation, they might not have two bathrooms, it might be a one bathroom house. So in that instance, that one person who's positive is that 10 days minimum, the other people is the 10 days plus the 14 for quarantine, so it ends up being 24 days minimum. And then if someone else in the household is positive, that 14 days gets pushed back. So you could have a household who is under isolation dash quarantine for quite a long period of time. The good news is, the person who is positive, at the end of their 10 days or by the time they're symptom-free for 24 hours, they can go out and go to school and do whatever, and the rest are still at home in quarantine.
Gotcha. All right, I appreciate the clarification, that's where it gets a little iffy for me. So, thank you.
Brandon, how about you?
I'm all set with questions. I just want to thank Kathy and all the nurses for all of their hard work. This is not easy at all, tracking these numbers, making sure that everybody who's been in contact gets the appropriate information. So just thank you for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you. Peter?
No questions either, just, you know, thank you to Kathy and all the other nurses and everyone who's been involved with this. I think Isabel has some merit to some of the things that she brought up, but I trust everything that's being, you know, decided right now, and I have full confidence, so thank you.
Ron?
As an RN, it's commendable for Kathy and Paula and everyone else who's involved in this because it's a moving target and we really don't know what's going to happen. We know the future is coming, and we don't have any idea what it entails. And it, it is a daunting task. I, uh, thank Kathy and Paula and the rest of the administration because they really, uh, they're trying very hard to meet the devil in, in his place.
Absolutely. Michael?
Yes, I also want to thank everybody who's working so hard to make this work, and I want to give kudos to Isabel for covering all the things that I was going to ask about.
Sorry.
Yes, um, thank you, and thank you to everybody. First, the, um, COVID Command Center, we usually chat a couple times a week, and that's the, you know, that's the state agency. So, uh, they called me on Thursday and they said, and, and I just wanted to make sure we clear this up, that our positivity rate was just over from yellow to, to red. If we were a little bit lower, we would continue to be yellow, so I make sure we, we, we clear that up, and that comes directly from them. Um, secondly, I, I think that there are a couple of ways, oh, let me get into this part of the testing. Uh, the numbers have gone up, yes, but again, with discussions from people from the state and the Department of Public Health. On, on our issue, we've obviously had some people associated with the church in Pittsburgh. However, testing is almost doubled. So for instance, they were doing, say, 200 cases at Health Alliance every day, and they were doing some testing at Reliant, but nothing close to that. Um, if you look at now, they're doing three, over 300, uh, tests a day over at Health Alliance. We did two days of 500. And, um, we probably generated one, two calls a day, ask, uh, people asking if they, there was a free testing site or where did they get tested. Um, in the last two weeks, we're generating dozens. So there's, there are more people getting tested, and that's a good thing because what we're finding is most of them are asymptomatic, so they don't have any symptoms at all, or they have very few. So that's a good thing, we're, we're finding those people who are testing positive, who might not have known, and they would have been out spreading this out to the community, or the potential that they could spread this out to the community. So on one end, that's a good thing, and that's why we see our numbers going up, because we're doing much more testing. So that doesn't mean that, that there are more people that have, um, that have COVID-19 in our community than there was three weeks ago. It means we did more testing and we found those people, especially those, um, you know, that tested positive that didn't know it, that could still be out in the community. Uh, the other piece of this, I think, is really important, I think the superintendent touched on, was this is really critical that everyone starts to really pay attention to this, because we're going indoors, we're spreading it. There's 4,236 clusters, and they're from the home. We're passing this around homes, parties, that sort of thing, and, uh, we're not passing it around the school, so that's, that's a, a good thing. Um, I think where we can probably look at some improvement is, we did supply the school department with 2.4 million, um, in CARES Act funding. But I think what we need to do is start to rotate some of the masks. What I've noticed lately is some of the masks that people are wearing are, are, um, pretty, getting pretty old, and if, whether it's a financial issue or not. So what we did is we issued, uh, masks to some of the, uh, housing developments in town, uh, to the seniors, high rises, um, at, at seven apiece. So we give them seven apiece so that they're constantly rotating these, washing them, cleaning, or throwing them away. And I think that's part of the issue is, you can have a mask, but it might not be functioning at, at 100%. So I think it might be worth us to invest some money in masks. And the other thing is that I think we kind of shied away from it at the beginning, because it was this thought that taking people's temperatures didn't, doesn't help. But I have to tell you, in my discussions with physicians throughout the last week and a half, um, it, it's mandatory to get into a, um, um, a medical facility to have your temperature taken. Uh, it's mandatory to have a fresh mask, not the mask you walked in with. And, um, and, and I think those are a couple of things. We have these machines that you just walk up to, and I think that would help a lot. And it may not be 100% effective, but I do think that somebody that might come in and be not quite feeling 100%, but is like, well, I just, you know, I woke up and maybe didn't get enough sleep last night, but they walk into one of these machines that gives them their temperature readout, and, uh, and it says it's kind of high or it's high. Um, that might help us as well, these machines are out there, they're not that, that expensive, but they certainly are helpful. So there are things that we can do in preparation, uh, and we will be having, hopefully, we're trying to get more testing done, free testing sites. So we requested two more days from the, uh, state COVID-19 Command Center. And, uh, we were approved today, we're just not sure what those days are. I would really like to get those to be days before school returns back on the seventh. Uh, I think that's critical. We're also in line for home testing kits and for the region, 13 communities, uh, that's probably 4,000 to 5,000 of those tests. We will not be giving them to people to take them home. We will set up various sites around the city, could be the schools, where people would come in, take the test, and hand them back to us. Just so that we don't hand them to somebody, they forget to take it, they lose it, they don't take the test correctly. We get those tests, collect them back, and then do those tests. So there's going to be a whole lot more testing going on. But the other side of this is, people really have to watch it during Thanksgiving. Um, if they're traveling, we need to know, if our city employees and school employees are traveling, we need to know this. And we can, need to know that they're coming back and getting tested, uh, before they could come back to work or come back to, to school. It's, it's critical that we know this. Um, because most people, the temperatures are dropping, people are back in the house. Uh, so one person comes to visit and, uh, you know, and, and affects a family, affects them, and, and next thing you know, they pass it around. And Isabel had asked about Pittsburgh, there is a difference. On the command, on a Sunday, um, conference call with Pittsburgh and a couple of other communities, it, it started with the church, and I'm not saying the church is responsible for every case, but it certainly did manifest and multiply out into the community, into, uh, the colleges, to the schools, to, um, you know, the workplace, work environment. And so that's what made it a little bit different than us, is they had a different situation. That was, that 30 days after the first day of the first revival, this thing was still multiplying out there in the community. And so that, that's what made it different than, than our situation. So I think, I, I think it's worthy of investing in some PPEs if we don't already have them. Make sure the students are changing on a regular basis, as well as the staff. Maybe some of these machines for each of the schools so that students can pass by them. Uh, but I've been on construction sites where it's mandatory, you can't get on the construction site, and other facilities, unless they at least take your temperature and you have a fresh mask. So I think it'd be worth investing in some of those prior to, uh, students coming back on the seventh.
Yes, I'd like to answer a few of those things. So masks, we did give free masks to every single student, and we also have masks available for staff and students as needed. Um, we have spreadsheets set up in regards to traveling, we know who's going to Brazil for two weeks, three weeks, we know who's going to Disney. Um, so we have a list in regards to when they return, and they are expected to give us a test showing that they are negative. And we also really encourage them, we tell them to look at the state website, because the, the states are safe changes, day by day by day. So they are responsible for knowing that, and they have to keep the results on them, it is the state law. Temperature checks, um, they were found not really to be valid when it comes to students. When we do those, uh, the checks as people walk by and we're pointing them at them because they're no touch. Um, they're not always accurate, on top of which, um, you know, three-quarters of the people don't have temperatures. So we really are relying on the parents to check their kids and make sure, you know, are your kids healthy or not? You know, take your temperature, their temperature at home, do they look right, do they have no appetite? You know, any changes in appetite, nausea, vomiting, headaches? Please, keep them home if they are symptomatic at all. Uh, and I'm really happy that we're doing more testing, that is wonderful, and you are correct. The more testing you do, the more positives you find, and by isolating those and quarantining their close contacts, that's how we're going to stop this.
Thank you, Kathy.
Kathy, I just wanted to obviously thank you for all your hard work, as well as all the other, um, nurses and everyone else. Um, Chris at, uh, DPH and every, everybody. But it is just to reiterate what everybody else says, it is a community issue, it's not a school issue, and everyone in the community needs to do their part, and wear their masks, and to socially distance, and wash their hands, and everything else. Um, and we need to take responsibility so that our children can continue to go to school in person, um, for those that are feeling safe to do so. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate that. And Dean, I'm very encouraged that you're able to get two more test sites, it sounds like testing days, it sounds like that was very, um, successful, you had a lot of, uh, traffic going through, so that's great to hear.
The, uh, Reliant is now down, it says they're doing a drive-through so that way it's warmer, so you can go through, but that's only for Reliant customers. And Health Alliance, uh, and, and I understand up in Gardner, um, at the hospital up there, it's days wait to get your, um, to get a test. A lot of the agencies that were providing free testing have backed off, saying now you need a symptoms, or doctors know, just because they cannot process that many people. Now, in this country, there was 35 million people tested in the last month, but there were 125 tests available, 125 million tests available. So what's happening is people are ramping up more and more to be able to reach that 125 million mark, uh, in, 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 in a period. But, um, I know the state has had to subcontract with a number of different companies to help them with this. So it, it's, it's, it's a matter of the more people we can test, the more people we can find, and then we should see the, you know, we should see the, uh, off-isolation list, uh, grow larger than the, you know, than that. But I, I just want to thank my staff, because it is everybody, police, fire, all departments within the city, who are working, and there is no end to the phone calls and emails and the people that come in. And, and there are some people not getting tested because it's a two or three-hour wait. Uh, we had to cut off one line at 1:00 in the afternoon, and we're trying to avert that because we really want people to get tested. Before, people were a little reluctant, felt fine, now there's this environment in the community where people want to get tested. The testing is a spit test, there's a different lower nasal test. So now people are warming up to the idea that, um, you know, they, they should get tested, we just need to make it faster. The results were coming back less than, so for some people, 24 hours, other people up to 48, but generally, nobody over 48 hours. So if we can get people tested and keep that testing going, uh, through a different number, from a variety of different resources, and get those results back and make the wait time not so long, I think we can really make a, uh, a, a big improvement by the time it's ready to get the kids back in the school.
I agree.
Great, thank you, Dean. Um, so now we're going to move on to, um, the superintendent's contract. Um, Brandon, do you want to?
Yeah, definitely.
You were, you were spearheading the, uh, committee for, uh, negotiations, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so, um, the negotiations committee met with the superintendent a couple Mondays ago, um, to discuss her contract. Um, we met in executive session last week to talk about, uh, the results of that. Um, and in the packet for this week was, uh, an updated three-year contract that, um, I would motion that we extend to the superintendent.
Um, do I have a second, and then we'll go into, Michael's going to second it. And I know, um, Michael, you had, uh, sent out, uh, some corrections.
Yes.
Um, some of them were typos, do you want to just briefly go over those?
Okay, I wasn't sure they were important enough for that, but yes.
I, I just want to make sure that everybody is okay with them.
So, um, on the bottom of page two, very last line, it says, "A required," it should say "as required." And near the top of page six, it says, "Chairman of the committee," it should say Chairperson of the committee. Uh, page seven, in section 10, part C, uh, it refers to the superintendent as he, that should say she, in the last sentence of section C. And then on page 10, in section 15, part B, um, I'm not quite sure if it was meant to be pick one of two words, or if there was supposed to be an "and," but it's talking about the superintendent's fitness too, and it says fulfill discharge the duties of this position. So I'm assuming we're either supposed to pick one of those words or put the word "and" in between them.
I would sense that it was probably "and."
Yeah, so that makes sense to me, so I think we just insert the word "and" there. So minor things, um, not sure any of them would matter to a lawyer, but you never know, sometimes they have rulings on whether there's a comma or not, so.
Um, it, it was Mark that had written this up, so, um, I'll let him know, but I can make the changes. Great, thank you, Chris. Does anybody have any, um, I'll just, just quickly to see if anybody has any comments or discussion, Sue? Sue, you're muted?
I know, I'm muted. Um, no, I don't have any comments, um, I just, I'm happy to see the contact, I'm happy to see the superintendent for another three years. So look forward to that. Thank you for your service.
Point about it, I, I mean, this should be read into the record, I mean, for the public as to what the contract is. What we're saying is there's a three-year contract, we're not explaining what the contract is, and we really should be reading this into the, into the record. Um, I, I know there's some typo errors, but we really should be reading it in to the record.
So when you say reading, we can say that there's a three-year contract, we never actually read an entire contract.
Well, you don't want contract, you want to read the terms of the contract, if there's something that's changing.
Right. And so, um, I guess I'm sorry, Dean, and I apologize, I'm a little confused because, um, we certainly, in the past, have never, you know, when we're in person, we've never read someone's contract, we've agreed to, um, you know, vote on a contract, and certainly, yes, you're absolutely right, we should note that it's a three-year contract. Um, and then it's part of the public record, um, but usually we don't read an entire contract. So I guess I'm not really sure if that's what you're asking?
I don't want you to read word to word, the, the terms of the contract is what needs to be read into the, to the, to the, to the record. For public disclosure.
So I guess, I mean, we're not, I don't know if any out, like, Brandon, is there anything specifically different? I thought it was fairly similar to her current contract.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly similar to her current contract. Um, the, the only major changes, I guess, was, um, in October of 2019, uh, the committee voted on a change that was added, that was formally put into the, um, the new contract, um, regarding the evaluation process whereby with a positive evaluation, um, the superintendent will receive a 1% merit increase. Um, so that's in there, um, in this contract.
All right, well, those, I, I think, Brandon, thank you, that's exactly what's neat, that the, for, listen, we're in the middle of COVID-19, we're not doing meetings like we used to do. We used to have people in the audience, we used to be able to put things up on, on the screen, people used to be able to show these, you know, these meetings taped in live. So if there are any differences, whether it's the salaries going up or the percentages, let's take them year by year and read them into the record.
So there is a salary increase, obviously? Brandon, do you have that offhand?
Um, so, uh, the starting salary for 2020 is going to be $187,740.54. That includes the favorable, um, merit increase from, um, the evaluation we talked about. And then effective July 1st of 2021, '22 and '23, um, the superintendent will receive a 2% increase each year.
Okay, thank you. So I'll continue going through, Melissa, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I, no, I'm relieved to hear that we have a leader who has taken the bull by the horn and is moving forward with the, for the next few years, so thank, thank you.
Isabel?
No, I just want to echo both what Sue and Melissa have said so far, and, uh, thank you for catching the errors, Michael, and the typo. And thank you for all your work on this, Brandon, for explaining to the public what, what's in there.
Brandon?
No, I'm all set, same comments, thank you Superintendent Deacon for all of your hard work, and I'm, I'm excited to work with you over these next years.
Peter?
Uh, no, nothing to add.
Ron?
No, nothing to add, I'm looking, I'm very happy to be working with the superintendent and meeting this, this time. And, uh, she's doing a spectacular job, and I'm very happy to be working with her.
Michael?
Yes, again, I'd just like to thank Paula for everything she's doing, and I'm happy that we were able to come to an agreement. That's it.
Thank you, Michael.
No, but I'm a little upset that our attorney doesn't understand that we have a chairperson, and those, those errors aren't taken kindly by me. Those, you should know our system enough, or at least have taken the time to make sure that, yeah, those, those,
that he had those, those, uh, you know, those areas covered. So, uh, it doesn't make me feel that he's in to, to, in tune with, with, uh, our school committee. But, um, I'll just cast it off as a, as a, a mistake.
Okay, and, um, Paula, thank you so much for all your hard work. And we look forward to continuing, uh, working with you. And, uh, we appreciate all you've done. Um, so we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna do a voice vote for a, um, vote. Sue?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Michael?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay. So motion carries. Thank you. Welcome officially for the next three years. Thank you, everybody. Your support is very much appreciated. Excellent. Um, so now we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes from the November second meeting. If someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, November second.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Ron. Any, um, corrections, omissions, errors?
Madam Chair, could I just, um, so I have comments that were addressed. I have a document that I'll be submitting as a communication from the mayor to the school committee on the seventh. Uh, you'll probably receive it earlier. There were just a couple of additions I had to make, but they're really based on comments that were made, uh, to the skiddy, the school committee in, uh, open and public session. So I wanna make sure I address those. And so I'm not gonna hold up approval of the minutes, uh, cause they, they will, um, speak for themselves, but I will be responding with a several page document that, again, I don't wanna tie you up with, but you'll get it, uh, in plenty of time, uh, prior to the next school committee meeting.
Okay, but at this point, you're comfortable moving forward?
I'm fine, no, I'm fine. Everybody said what they said. Everything else looks in order. It's just my, my remarks will be addressing some of the comments that were made at the public forum.
Okay, all right. Um, so at this point, uh, I'm a yay and the, uh, motion carries to approve the minutes. Great, um, subcommittee reports, finance, Michael?
Finance has not met since the last school committee meeting. We are, expect to have a meeting, um, Thursday, December, what is that?
Third, December third.
Yep, December third. And of course we'll have our regular meeting before the school committee meeting on Monday, December seventh.
Okay, thank you. Ron? Oh, go ahead, Dean.
Question. If, if we, before we leave for the holiday, if we could get just an updated, um, you know, snapshot of where we are on all of our balances, on all accounts, including, um, revolving or any other accounts we might have for grants. If we could get that before we leave for, um, vacation, that would be really helpful.
Sure.
All right, policy, subcommittee, Ron?
Uh, we had a policy meeting this afternoon. Uh, I had trouble with my, uh, with my audio, so, uh, Eileen had the, had the cover for me. And we voted on, uh, we reviewed the, uh, the addendum for high school, the high school handbook regarding, uh, regarding, uh, procedures with students during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And, um, we're gonna, I believe the second, the first, this was, it, next, the next meeting will be the first reading. Am I correct on that, Eileen?
Um, sorry, I muted myself. Um, so we did make some, um, corrections.
Right.
And, uh, minor things, um, but just to, uh, clarify a few things. Um, so we can certainly, um, uh, do it at our next meeting unless, um, you wanted to talk about the, uh, corrections and then we could do first reading tonight. It's up to you, Ron. But, um, just for folks to know, we did talk about, um, having the other, um, middle school and elementary school handbooks updated to reflect, um, some of the, um, COVID nineteen policies that we've put into place, um, which aren't reflected in the, in the handbook. So we will be doing that at the next meeting. Um, our next meeting is not really until late December.
Yeah.
Um, because it would be our second meeting, which would be on the fourteenth.
Um, we can do the first reading of this if you, if, I just didn't know, uh, where's Brandon? Brendan, Melissa?
Yeah, we had voted on it in our subcommittee already to, um, approve the corrections. Chris, if you can just, uh, briefly let folks know what the corrections are? Cause I didn't write them down. Did you write them down?
I'm muted, Chris.
Chris, you're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. Ah, um, let's see if I can pull it up here. Oh, oh, I've got, I've got twelve screens going here. Okay. Let's see, sixteen. Okay, let's see. Um, uh, we were gonna, um, we were gonna put in there to, uh, remind people that there would be a hotspot. Um, uh, they usually have access. Let me see what I wrote down, cause I put it here. You know, in, um, basic in-person school adequate, the last bullet, we changed to, um, no physical contact.
Right.
As opposed to listing things.
Yeah.
And then the last page, um, where it says, um, students should wait patiently for an amount of time. We put maybe ten minutes.
Right, and there was that spelling.
Right, we just, we weren't gonna, but maybe we're just gonna put ten minutes. Yeah, and the other thing was where it said students have to go to an alternate house, not grandma's house.
Right.
And the spelling error, we had, it had two, two ads on page, uh, three, I believe, at the bottom. So.
Yeah, so it would just minor changes like that, but that was it. So I think, you know, we probably can do the first reading today and then the second reading at our next meeting.
Okay.
Ron, if you would like to make a motion?
I, I'll make a motion that this will be the first reading of the, uh, the, uh, COVID nineteen procedures with students during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
For the high school handbook.
At the high school handbook, student handbook, handbook, addendum for twenty, twenty one and twenty twenty one.
Second. Brandon, seconding, thank you. Um, this, any other comments or questions?
I, I had a question.
Sure.
Ron, a couple of meetings ago, I talked about policy on, on, um, filling vacancies at new positions and about advertising them. And, um, is that still on the, sort of, the, the, um, agenda to, kind of the forward agenda to take up as a topic?
I believe so.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
And, and then also, I think one of the other areas that we've, um, that I've heard, and I think the school committee has, is that our staff doesn't always look, look like the, the, the members that teach us. And in terms of diversity, whether the, the community and what our, what our plan is to sort of, uh, you know, balance that out. And I think those two issues should, you know, probably be on the same night. And, um, I, I would be available to sort of speak to the area of hiring, um, and opening up all positions, no matter what they are, and opening them up to make sure they all get advertised, so everybody has an equal fair chance. Cause we've done that at City Hall. And I would, I would like to be invited as a guest as the mayor, not school committee member, because I think I could help you to facilitate that. And, um, but I, 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 I think it's a good policy. It's worked well for us. And other communities are, are modeling that same sort of, uh, uh, way of thinking to put our jobs out for advertising, no matter what they are.
Great, we appreciate your offer, Dean. And we can, um, but you know, uh, when it's on our agenda. So, um, it is something I think is very timely and important, um, particularly in our community. We have a very diverse community.
Yep.
So we should have diverse staff. All right, um, so having no one else making a comment about the motion and the second, be voice vote, Sue?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Michael?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'll be a yay, so that motion carries. Um, the next we have, um, is, uh, action items, and there's nothing under the action items. Um, so newer old business, um, HR report.
Those are just inspirational. Those are the two I give each month.
Okay, any, um, enrollment report?
There's an enrollment, um, we're holding steady right now. Um, we're shy about a hundred and fifty still from last year. And it's mostly represented in our kindergarten by about a hundred of those students. So we're trying to enlist folks to come back to us as soon as possible.
One of the, um, things, uh, under newer old business that, um, I would like to put out there, um, for the committee, um, to think about and possibly, um, put on our next agenda. Um, you know, having worked with, um, Kathy Goddard, I, um, realized that she is doing the job of about ten people, um, and doing many things that is not in her job description. Um, so I don't know how the committee feels about, um, giving Kathy some kind of stipend or bonus. Um, she's working on weekends. She's working late at night. She's working early in the morning. Um, and I would think that that's something that might be able to, and Dean and Paula probably could, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but something that might be able to come out of the CARES Act money, um, given all the extra duties, um, that she's, um, had thrown at her and she's doing it with such grace. Um, so I just throw that out there. I don't know how anybody else feels about that. Melissa, if you're talking, you're muted. I don't know if you're talking to us. Any other, any thoughts? Go ahead, Sue.
I would support that. I think that's, um, definitely above and beyond. She has gone above and beyond, so, um, I, I would definitely support something like that.
I agree. I agree wholeheartedly, cause, uh, she's been doing a Yaman's work, you know? And, uh, it's, it's, and I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be finished. You know, it's almost like, we may, you know, yes, we're entertaining the idea of a stipend, but we may also have to entertain an idea, perhaps she may need some help. Paula?
Yep, yep, definitely. We, she has been interviewing and interviewing. It's really hard to get nurses to come into the school department.
Yeah.
So she had quite a few interviews last week, so we're hoping.
But I, I'm talking in terms of somebody working with her.
Oh, we're, we're watching.
That may need to be, cause Dean, are you listening?
Yes, Ron, I'm listening.
Okay, I think, and you can correct me, you can, you, you can all say that I'm just talking trash, but I think she needs help. Because it's gonna get a little bit more time consuming and labor intensive. And yes, we're thinking about a stipend, but I'm also hoping somehow, somewhere, we might, she might need to have some help. Besides interviewing, having some, some others working with her, she may need to have somebody working alongside her. Because it's gonna be not just, not just for the short term, for the long term. Because as you said, Paula, or was it Eileen, that she's been doing, working in the morning and at night and everything else in between. And, and it's gonna become more labor intensive. Uh, there is no end. Anyway, that's it.
All right, thank you, Ron. Those are all certainly things for us to consider. Um, so if we, maybe we can, you know?
Can I just comment, just cause you brought it up? I, I'd be remiss. I mean, we, we just, we just shifted two point four million over to the school department and you're, you're recommending a stipend for one person. I have, uh, the whole fund is being administered by the grant people here at City Hall. And this is, this is nights, weekends, it's not exactly what, so there are, and, and I respect and admire everything that the school department is doing, but there are a number of people working just as hard, if not harder, at City Hall and working for the city who are working on these sorts of issues. That if we're gonna compensate one person, we need to compensate them all. Or, or this isn't gonna work so well for some of the people's morale that, that don't speak up or, or, um, you know, tell what they've been doing. Uh, the reality is if we're gonna do that, we need to look across all of those that have been stepping up to the plate with little or no recognition for what they've been doing. So, um, I'm all in favor of it, but if we're gonna do it for one, then we've gotta do it for everybody involved.
So, I mean, I, with the school committee's purview isn't, um, able to make decisions about other, um, city employees. We can all make decisions.
Directly related to the schools. I'm not talking about things that are outside of the purview of the schools. This is directly related to the schools. Board of Health, grants administrator that's administering the grants for the CARES Act. I mean, if you can get into that, then, um, you, you, you gotta compensate everybody equally.
But Dean, when I was saying about Kathy, I'm speaking in terms for nursing and medical.
Well, Ron, if you know any nurses, send them our way. We're looking for nurses. We can't, we can't, we can't cultivate nurses. We put ads out and.
I didn't say to cultivate nurses. I said we need to reach, we need to get some. And we need, and she needs to be able to get somebody to help her.
Yeah, well, we also need nurses too at City Hall, Ron. So if you know any, um, send them, send them our way. Uh, we've advertised for the positions and it's been difficult to get them.
Yeah, I think that's a universal problem. They're in great demand, obviously. Um, so, I mean, this is something for us to think about. I don't know, Paula, um, you know, if there's other, you know, ways, I don't, uh, you know, how to compensate somebody, so.
Yeah, so Kathy's part of the teachers' union. So I would have to bring, um, the union president forward and we'd have a conversation between Leah and Jim Riley and Kathy and myself. So we can do that. And I can bring you back, okay?
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody else have anything under old or new business?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Ron.
I could, Ron, uh, go ahead. This is related to what we were just talking about. I, uh, when we have the upcoming finance meeting, um, and we look at what's, you know, remaining in the, uh, the CARES Act money that the city did send over to us, and we can just, you know, have that as part of our discussion, um, in case it, it is something that becomes, uh, a potential reality.
No.
Anybody else have anything that they wanna add? And Ron?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to let you, give you a heads up about the, uh, oh, the resolutions that, uh, we voted on.
Thank you.
Everything was passed, yes, except for the first one, the resolution one, MCAS and high-stakes testing that was table for future reference. Because there was a lot of, uh, uh, push and pull on that. But everything else got passed. There were some discussions about the, uh, lowering the voting age for municipal, municipal elections. There were some people that didn't want the age lowered because they were saying that the sixteen, seventeen year olds didn't have the maturity. And someone said, well, if you're gonna use that argument, when you turn seventy or seventy one, if they start saying because of your age, you cannot, uh, you're showing that you cannot engage in critical thinking, what are you gonna do? So after that, they decided to.
I think Ron's position was it was a local option. And that's why I think that some of the members, some of us, I'll speak for myself, voted for it. I'm not sure about.
I'm saying at, at the res, at the delegates, there was some, there was some whopping wolf about it, but it got passed, you know? That's it.
Thank you, Ron, for doing that. We always appreciate you, um, being our representative, so thank you. Anybody else have anything that they, uh, wanna bring up for newer old business? All right, then can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Thank you, Sue, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ron. This is gonna be a voice vote.